Good evening, everyone. This evening, we have a very special student, Ms. Sadie Rochelle, who's a senior at Destrehan High School. She's going to lead us in a prayer before the pledge. And following that, then Mr. Alexander will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But before Ms. Rochelle begins, I want to tell you a little bit about her. She is a triple A student, excelling in academics, athletics, and the arts. Her achievements include, and participation include, Destrehan High School Volleyball All-District, National Honor Society Treasurer, Destrehan High School Women's Choir, Concert Choir and Show Choir, Fellowship of Christian Students Officer and Member, Destrehan High School Tennis All-District, and the Volleyball District Champions. I will tell you what a list of accomplishments, Ms. Sadie. We're so happy to have you with us this evening. Thank you for this.
Dear Lord, thank you for giving us the opportunity to gather here in person today. Bless all individuals being recognized here tonight. Please guide our board members and faculty in making decisions that benefit the health and safety of our students, ensuring the happiness for everyone in this upcoming school year. Amen.
Amen. ... of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, thank you so much, Ms. Sadie Rochelle. We wish you a wonderful senior year.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, darling. I know, too sweet. Ladies, we did hear you nicely and loudly recite the Pledge of Allegiance. What are your names?
My name is Sophia.
Sophia.
Welcome, Sophia and Bella. Well, you blessed us with the wonderful Pledge of Allegiance that we could hear your sweet little voices. Thanks for joining us tonight. Okay. It's 6:30. A call to order. The St. Charles Parish Public School Board meeting for Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021. First order up is our roll call. And this evening, we are fortunate to have all school board members with us. We also have our superintendent, Dr. Ken Ortling, and our board secretary, Ms. Shelley Babino. Welcome, one and all. Oh, I would also like to recognize Mr. Tyler Dufresne is here as a member of our school system, but he's also a La Fouche Parish School Board member. So we want to recognize you for that wonderful gift that you give to La Fouche Parish. Now, we're going to move on to our recognitions. Item 2.01, Board and Superintendent Recognition. Dr. Ortling and I will come down and present certificates to all of our honorees.
School system employees are 2021 Shell Science Lab Regional Challenge winners. Here to present them to the board is Shell's External Relations Manager, Ms. Rochelle Tushard.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Ortling, it's a pleasure to be back again, once again, to recognize excellence within the school system. In Shell's ongoing efforts to provide more robust and innovative science education and lab experiences in the schools near our assets, we have once again partnered with the National Science Teachers Association to award science lab curriculum, materials, and professional development to schools and science teachers that best demonstrated their ability to improve science achievement for our students. We believe it is important to foster creativity through hands-on experiences, and these additional resources will enable students to develop a problem-solving mindset that will lead to energy solutions of the future. The Science Lab Challenge offers prize packages for one elementary, one middle, and one high school near our assets. Winning schools receive science lab materials to improve science education, and science teachers receive professional development to improve their content knowledge and instructional practices to inspire more students to pursue STEM careers. The elementary and middle schools will receive a $10,000 prize package, and the high school will receive a $15,000 prize package. Tonight, I am honored to recognize the following schools and their outstanding teachers. Norco Elementary School teacher Tracy Com, Principal Shannon Deodnay.
Congratulations, Shannon.
R.K. Smith Middle School two-time recipient, teacher Jennifer Green, and Principal Harold Blood, who is here accepting on her behalf. And Destrehan High School teachers Marcy Scott and Allison Bro, Principal Jason Mauder. And lastly, Shell and the National Science Teachers Association also recognize three grand prize winners from the cast of regional winners across the country. The 2021 grand prize recipients were selected from last year's honorees. I am proud to announce that the high school grand prize recipients are Tyler Dufresne and Cecilia Gillum of Hornville High School and Principal Jose Gonzalez.
School system employees are Louisiana Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching finalists. From Hornville High School, Tyler Dufresne. Destrehan High School student is one of two students in the state of Louisiana to be named as a U.S. Presidential Scholar, Eric Jones. School system students placed in the Louisiana State Young Authors Contest. Third place, Aiden Taylor of Norco Elementary School. Second place recipients, Lauren Baker, Destrehan High School. Kaylee Kerriggy, Destrehan High School. Brayden Gregory, J.B. Martin Middle School. Kenneth Abair, R.K. Smith Middle School. Eric Jones, Destrehan High School. Kayden Nakann, Norco Elementary School. And now for our first place recipients. Once again, first place in the State Young Authors Contest. Jude Baldwin, Mimosa Park Elementary School. Jamaya Chapman, R.K. Smith Middle School. Bella Comardell, Alaman's Elementary School. Faris Elmada, Destrehan High School. Martalisa Fisher, Hornville High School. Sophia Fonsika, Alaman's Elementary School. Vanita Hang, Albert Cammon Middle School. Destiny Holmes, R.K. Smith Middle School. Desmond Martin, Alaman's Elementary School. Mary Passani, J.B. Martin Middle School. And Jordan Robin, Norco Elementary School.
Well, on behalf of the board, I congratulate each and every one of our honorees tonight. Tonight was a night to celebrate academics. We appreciate all the hard work that our teachers have put forth, our students, and the parents that helped them to excel and be here tonight to receive their honor, their certificates of honor. We're going to take just a couple of minutes break, unless you'd like to remain with us for the remainder of our building, for our meeting. You're welcome to. But if you'd like to leave at this time, we'll take a two-minute break. Item 3.01, expulsion appeal of student number one. As per the Louisiana Revised Statute 17:416, 3.3B4, the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the superintendent or the superintendents designee. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, June 21st, 2021, at the request of student number one's mother to consider her request of the board to review the decision to expel student number one and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendation of its ad hoc committee.
Madam President, I move that we approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanctions of student number one.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Nakann, a second by Mr. Okwane. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote.
Mine just popped up.
Item 3.01 passes unanimously. Item 3.02, minutes of the May 10th, 2021 committee meetings, May 12th, 2021 regular board meeting, and June 7th, 2021 board retreat.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Rochelle and a second by Mr. Smith. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.02 passes unanimously. Item 3.03, ratification of change order number one, E.J. Landry Alternative Roof Replacement. The contract modifications included in change order number one are to remove and install new metal wall panels at a cost of $7,264. To prevent further delay of the project, authorization was given to the contractor to proceed with the work after getting approval from the board president, vice president, and capital improvements chairperson. Approval of this change order will allow the district to make the necessary modifications to the existing contract. This item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the board on Monday, June 21st, 2021, and is aligned with Goal D of the board's strategic action plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept the ratification of change order number one for the E.J. Landry Alternative Center in the amount of $7,264.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Sufferin. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.03 passes unanimously. Item 3.04, job description for Lead Agency Early Childhood Family Center Liaison. At the June 16th, 2021 Bessie Board meeting, Lead Agency grant funds for Ready Start and B3 Seats were awarded to St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The grants are intended to improve and expand access to affordable, high-quality, early childhood learning opportunities for children birth to three. Each grant proposal includes hiring one Lead Agency Early Childhood Family Center Liaison. The proposed position would be at no cost to the district and will be eliminated if and when grant funds are not awarded. The proposed Lead Agency Early Childhood Family Center Liaison position will be based on the classified salary schedule with benefits. The St. Charles Parish Public Schools Classified Evaluation Plan will include and ensure that the Lead Agency Early Childhood Family Center Liaison salary is paid with Ready Start and B3 Seat Grant Funds. This agenda item was reviewed at the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee meeting of the board on Monday, June 21st, 2021, and is aligned with Goal A of the board's strategic plan.
Madam President, I'm moving that we approve the job description for the Lead Agency Childhood Family Center Liaison.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Savoie and a second by Mr. Okwane. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.04 passes unanimously. Item 3.05, personnel items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of the St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, June 21st, 2021, and is aligned with Goal B of the board's strategic plan.
Madam President, I move approval of the personnel items for our, for the month, as presented to the board.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Nakann, a second by Mr. Alexander. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.05 passes unanimously. Item 3.06, job description revisions. The superintendent is responsible for recommending job description revisions to the board. Several revisions are being recommended for the 2021-2022 school year. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, June 21st, 2021, and is aligned with Goal B of the board's strategic action plan.
Madam President, I move that we approve the current job description revisions as presented to the board on Monday.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Nakann, a second by Mr. Savoie. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.06 passes unanimously. Item 3.07, Board Policy 5.74, Purchasing and Bidding, First Reading. Upon review of Board Policy and Procedure 5.74, Purchasing and Bidding, significant revisions were required. This agenda item was reviewed at the board retreat on Monday, June 7th, 2021, and is aligned with Goal C of the board's strategic plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept the revisions to Board Policy 5.74, Purchasing and Bidding, for our first reading.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Nakann. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.07 passes unanimously. Item 3.08, Official Journal for Fiscal Year 2021-2022. Louisiana Revised Statute 43:141 requires that each school board select an official journal for a term not to exceed one year. The newspaper shall have been published in an office physically located in St. Charles Parish for a period of five years preceding the selection. Shall not have missed during that period as many as three consecutive issues unless caused by fire, flood, strike, or natural disaster. Shall have maintained a general page circulation in St. Charles Parish for five consecutive years prior to selection. And shall have been entered in a U.S. Post Office in St. Charles Parish under a second-class mailing permit in that parish for a period of five consecutive years prior to the selection. At this time, only the St. Charles Herald Guide qualifies as the school board's official journal. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, June 21st, 2021, and is aligned with Goal E of the board's strategic action plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept the St. Charles Herald Guide as the school board's official journal for the 2021-2022 school year at an approximate cost of $15,000 per year.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Rochelle. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.08 passes unanimously. I'm going to have to call for a brief recess. We're having a little technical difficulty. We're having a little technical difficulty, and we need to get that straight so we can make sure that all of our items are presented accurately this evening. We're going to proceed now with Item 3.09 Resolution Granting Appointment of Phelps Dunbar, Dunbar, excuse me, LLP for Special Counsel Services. Louisiana Revised Statute 42:263 authorizes the retention of special counsel by any school board upon a statement of reason why such counsel is necessary and upon the approval by the Attorney General. It is necessary that the school board retain special counsel with expertise in school law and sales and use tax law to represent the school board with respect to general legal advice, consultation, and representation in lawsuits and in other legal issues as the need may arise and as assigned by the school board.
Madam President, I move that we approve the resolution granting appointment of Phelps Dunbar, LLP, for Special Counsel Services.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Nakand. Any discussion? Yes, sir?
Madam President, it's not actually on the item, but we just need to make sure we are noting for Shelley's records.
Who did the second suffer?
Me. Nakand.
You're doing good.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. I appreciate your support down there.
Multitasking.
I was struggling.
Yep.
Yes. Okay. Again, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.09 passes unanimously. Item 3.10 Resolution on Oversight Authorization of School Board Bank Accounts. Personnel changes at schools and centers dictate changing authorization on checking accounts. Banking institutions require approval from an authorized school board representative to allow for these changes. Therefore, the school board presents this resolution authorizing the chief financial officer to approve on behalf of the Board changes to authorize signers for the school board, schools, and centers.
Madam President, I move that we approve the resolution authorizing the chief financial officer to approve authorized signers for the school board, schools, and centers.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Nakand. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.10 passes unanimously. Item 3.11 Members of the Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center Endowment Fund Board. The Board approved a resolution for Shell's sponsorship of the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center Endowment Fund at the November 14, 2018 Board Meeting. As the overseeing custodian of the endowment fund, the St. Charles School Board must approve the appointment or reappointment of the initial board members for the endowment fund. The terms of reappointment are as follows. Rochelle Tushard and Robert Fisher for a period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2023; Stephanie Gullidge and Rosemary Sanders for a period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
Madam President, I move that we approve the reappointment of Rochelle Tushard, Robert Fisher, Stephanie Gullidge, and Rosemary Sanders to the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center Endowment Fund.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Robichaud. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.11 passes unanimously. Item 3.12 Renewal Term of Board of Trustees for the Ethel Scheffner Scholarship Fund. Members of the Board of Trustees of the Ethel Scheffner Scholarship Fund were initially appointed to a staggered three-year, two-year, and one-year terms respectively. No time limit was set on the number of terms any one appointee could serve accordingly. It is necessary for the St. Charles Parish School Board to appoint new members, renew the terms of the current members, or replace members. The St. Charles Parish School Board is the overseeing custodian of this trust fund, and members of the Board of Trustees must be approved by the school board in order to award scholarships in conformity with set criteria and guidelines.
Madam President, I move that we renew the term of Helen Memms to the Ethel Scheffner Board of Trustees for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Smith. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.12 passes unanimously. Item 3.13 Interim Fiscal Year 22 Budget. The preliminary budget packet was sent to the Board on Wednesday, June 2, 2021. A public hearing was held on Wednesday, June 23, 2021, at 5:45 p.m. in compliance with statutory provisions. The proposed budget for fiscal year 22 represents a budget that allocates approximately 79.53% of general fund expenditures in the area of instruction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 21, 2021, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Plan.
I move that we approve the interim FY '22 budget.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Robichaud. Do we have any discussion?
Madam President, I'd like to invite our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Ronald White, to come and say a few words and lead into a video presentation for the Board.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and thank you, Madam President, and school board members for giving me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. At this time, I'd like to present a short video presentation summarizing the budget for the upcoming year. It is my pleasure to present this overview of the interim budget for the year ending June 30, 2022. Beginning with the general fund, the school system's main operating fund, you can see on this graph that revenues for the general fund have risen over the last 10 years, but have been flat over the last three years. Revenues for fiscal year 22 are budgeted to decrease by approximately $700,000. As the year goes on and the economic recovery and its effect on the local economy become clearer, revenues can be adjusted when the revised budget is presented in the spring of 2022. This graph shows the breakdown of the major sources of revenue for the general fund over the last 10 years. Ad valorem, or property taxes, are the single largest source of revenue for the general fund and are shown here by the red bars. Ad valorem taxes have increased over the last 10 years. Sales taxes are the second-largest source of revenue for the general fund and are represented here by the blue bars. Sales taxes are more volatile and harder to project. Sales taxes are most affected by economic conditions such as the COVID pandemic. The third-largest source of revenue for the general fund is funding from the state's Minimum Foundation Program, which is shown here by the green bars. This source of funding has remained level over the last 10 years. General fund expenditures are budgeted to decrease by approximately $1.8 million in fiscal year 22. During fiscal year 21, the cost of one-time payments made to employees amounted to $4.3 million, and this cost is not included in the fiscal year 22 budget. However, other expenditures are budgeted to increase by $2.5 million, or 1.65%. These two items result in a net decrease of expenditures of $1.8 million. The Louisiana Department of Education strives to have school districts spend at least 70% of their general fund expenditures for instructional purposes. This graph shows that the fiscal year 22 budget projects that 79.53% of the general fund's expenditures will be for instruction. This percentage is consistent with previous years. The balance of the general fund is budgeted to increase by nearly $750,000 over fiscal year 22. This increase represents the general fund's revenues exceeding expenditures and transfers out of the general fund to the debt service funds, capital projects funds, and lunch fund. The projected ending fund balance will be almost $39 million. This represents more than 24% of the budgeted general fund revenues. The Louisiana Department of Education strives to have school districts end the year with a general fund balance of at least 10% of general fund revenues. Moving now to the special revenue funds, revenues and expenditures are both budgeted to equal $12 million. Since most of the special revenue funds account for reimbursement grants, it is expected that revenues and expenditures will be nearly equal. Included in the $12 million in revenues and expenditures is $4.9 million of new federal coronavirus relief funds. The budget for the debt service funds reflects revenues of $9 million and expenditures of $10 million, with the general fund transferring $1 million to fund the difference. $7 million of debt will be retired during fiscal year 22. The capital projects funds are budgeted to spend $19.9 million, funded with $7 million of ad valorem tax revenues, a transfer from the general fund of $4.6 million, and the balance funded by the proceeds of the 2019 sales tax bonds held by the capital projects funds. The lunch fund is budgeted to receive $6.5 million in revenues and to have $6.4 million of expenditures. It is hoped and expected that the operations of the district's food services will return to normal during fiscal year 22. It has been my pleasure to present this overview of the upcoming fiscal year 22 interim budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear? You want me to redo it? You sure? Okay.
Cast your vote.
Well, you did. Item 3.13 passes unanimously. Item 3.14 Operational Change Recommendations. After reviewing school system needs, appropriate changes are being proposed to system operations and staffing as reviewed with the Board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 21, 2021, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Madam President, I move that we approve the operational change recommendations at an approximate cost of $284,213.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Nakand. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.14 passes unanimously. Item 3.15 Accounts Payable for the Month of May 2021. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Request for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 21, 2021, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of May 2021 in the total amount of $3,655,110.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Alexander. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 3.15 passes unanimously. We knew, we now have two items that were, through technology, left off the agenda. And so, at this time, we're having difficulty getting it pulled up. So, we're, I'm going to read them out loud, and we are going to do an oral vote. Item 3.16 The Purchase of an Updated Sales Tax Collection Software System. Currently, the sales tax department is using a software package called Rev Solution. Because of its inability to be upgraded, lack of technical resources to perform even minor updates, and limited functionality, the Rev Solution software package has become obsolete. We advertised in the newspaper for bids on providing an upgraded system. Only two responses were received, one from RIA Advisory for $39,950 per month, and the other from Software Services for $27,990 the first year and $11,750 for maintenance thereafter. Software and services is the provider for many Louisiana local sales tax jurisdictions. Therefore, the needed software already exists and does not need to be developed.
I move that we approve, that we accept Software and Services proposal at a cost of $27,990 plus the $11,750 for annual maintenance.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Okwam. We will need to do an, you have discussion?
Just a point of clarification. Just, the items that you're about to read were not left off the agenda. They're on, they were publicized on our agenda. They were just not on our.
On our board docs. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that.
I just didn't want to confuse them publicly if somebody thinks we're less.
You're right. We are not adding agenda items. They were already published. You're right. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Any other discussion or comments? All right, we'll have to take an oral vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? It passes unanimously. Item 3.16 passes unanimously. Item 3.17 Superintendent's Evaluation. The Board has conducted the Superintendent's Evaluation for the 2020-21 school year. The performance of the Superintendent has been exemplary while leading the school system through a pandemic and reaching performance benchmarks as discussed in executive session of the Board on June 7, 2021. I now need approval from the Board for the continuation of the Superintendent's existing contract to include an annual pay adjustment or reject the recommendation.
I move approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Okwam and a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll again cast an oral vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay. I'm sorry.
Ah, correct that.
You punished. Item 3.17 passes unanimously.
Just for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Because there was a salary increase and so forth, does that have to be read into the minutes?
What the increase was?
What the changes were.
I could tell you, yes, I can read that.
Please.
Absolutely will. So, the estimated cost of the salary increase is $12,302 for the coming school year. Thank you. All right. We are now going to move into, any further discussion? Go ahead.
That is what the cost is, but that's not how it was approved.
It was approved as a, as a 5% increase.
A 5% increase.
Yes, sir. Over the current salary.
Go ahead.
Any further discussion or comment? We'll move on to our closing items. Any standing, any committee chair persons would like, chair members would like to report at this time?
Madam President.
Capital Improvements.
That's you.
The Capital Improvement Committee met on Monday night, and there was one item on our agenda, and that item was the ratification of change order number one for the U.J. Landry Alternative Center Root Replacement Project. That item was approved tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Appreciate that.
Madam President, Personnel and Policy Committee met on Monday. We covered three items. The first item was our personnel moves, our monthly personnel moves. Second item was job description revisions. Those two items were brought to the Board table tonight and approved. The third item was a revision to procedure 4.32 Sick Leave, and that was a report by Ms. Weber on Sick Leave procedures, some minor adjustments there, and that was for committee meeting only. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nochan.
Madam President, the Finance and Audit Committee had a meeting on Monday, June 21, and covered six items. Five of the six items came to the full Board for consideration during this meeting and were approved. Those five items were Board Policy 5.74, Purchasing and Bidding for a First Reading, Official Journal for Fiscal Year 2021-2022, Interim FY '22 Budget, the Operational Change Recommendations that the Superintendent made, Accounts Payable for the Month of May 2021. For committee discussion only, the committee was provided a financial report on the Before and After School Child Care Program by the Director of Child Welfare and Attendants and our internal auditor. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin.
Madam President, the Legislative Committee met on Monday and reviewed legislation that was either pending or had passed by the Louisiana State Legislature during the recent session. There were one or two items there that the Board needed to have immediate information on. However, a complete listing of all of those bills that were pending before the Legislature was given to the Board for review during their leisure and will be discussed by the Board at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate that. Nothing? Okay. The Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee also met on Monday, June 21. We had two items on our agenda. One was committee meeting only, discussing the Spanish textbooks that are being adopted for high school, and the other was approved earlier this evening, and that item was the Job Description for Lead Agency Early Childhood Family Center Liaison, which again is going to be paid for with Ready Start and B3 Seat Grant Funds, which we are most appreciative of. Right, we will move on now to item 4.02, our Superintendent's Report. Dr. Ortling.
Thank you, Madam President. Hurricane season began on June 1 and extends through November. The state and parish emergency operations centers have distributed information about hurricane preparedness and response. Over the years, St. Charles Parish Public Schools has worked closely with our parish Prepared Emergency Operations Center to make sure that this school system has a comprehensive plan for preparing and responding to hurricane events. Please be prepared throughout this season and make a plan in case one threatens our area, as we saw recently. The Business Office once again received a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from Government Finance Officers Association and the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Association of School Business Officials International for the 2019-2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. These certificates represent the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. Congratulations to outgoing CFO Donna Post and members of her department and the Board for this recognition. While students are enjoying their summer break, teachers and administrators are busy preparing for the new school year. Hundreds of teachers are attending professional development sessions on topics such as the science of reading, English, science, and social studies. Why, when you see, of course, math as well. When you see teachers and administrators this summer, please thank them for their focus on continuous improvement of teaching and learning. The Annual Youth Rally for St. Charles Parish Students and Parents will take place on Saturday, July 31, 2021, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon in the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center parking lot. The rally is sponsored by St. Charles Parish Sheriff's Office, a safe place of St. Charles, Blessed to be a blessing, United Way of St. Charles, and St. Charles Parish Public Schools. This year's events will be a drive-through, school supply giveaway to the first 700 St. Charles Parish residents. Social distancing mandates will be in effect. This is a great kickoff to the school year. Hope to see you there. Free and reduced meal applications for the 2021-2022 School Year will be available online for parents to complete beginning in the month of July. A Blackboard Connect message will be made to households advising when the application process is open. This will allow the Child Nutrition Department to process meal applications in July and provide meal benefits beginning the first day of school. We encourage you to submit the application online. The online application is quicker and easier. Paper applications will be mailed home this summer. If you need a paper application, one can be requested from the cafeteria manager at your child's school or from the Child Nutrition Department at 985-785-3179. Additional information regarding meal benefits can be found on the district website on the Child Nutrition Department page. And finally, last but certainly not least, in fact, they're the most important recognition that we shall give tonight, our new administrators. We would like to officially congratulate and introduce a few of our new administrators and their assignments for the 2021-2022 School Year. Mr. Jose Gonzalez, Principal of Hondo High School. Ms. Jennifer Gonzalez, Assistant Principal at Norco Elementary School. Ms. Amy Hayden, Assistant Principal at Mimosa Park Elementary School. And our Assistant Principal from Lakewood Elementary. Ms., and the name is, what? Sandra McCullough. Why did that name forget? Ms. Sandra McCullough, Lakewood Elementary School. I lost my place on the, on the- Congratulations to y'all. We look forward to your growth and your impact on our students this summer and this school year. Thank you. And Mr. Sean Dwyer also was appointed to Norco, not Norco, Harry Hurst Middle School, and he is on vacation right now. A well-deserved vacation. Congratulations to y'all and welcome.
Congratulations.
And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, sir.
Madam President, before we adjourn, I'd like to add an item to the agenda. I'd like to go into executive session to discuss the evaluation of the Superintendent.
Have a motion by Mr. Robishow and a second by Mr. Smith. Do we have any discussion?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Alexander, how do you vote? Mr. Nochan?
Yes.
Mr. Seva?
No.
Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Robishow?
Yes.
Mr. Oakham?
Yes.
The vote passes seven to one.
It's got to be unanimous.
Oh, it has to be unanimous. Oh, well. It fails.
Okay. Motion adjourned.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Robishow and a second by Mr. Nochan. We are adjourned.